Okay, it is five thirty, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. In open session pursuant to Governor Healey's March twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-three revised order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. GL Chapter Thirty-eight, Section Eighteen. Meetings in Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee will be conducted both in person and remote through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Shed items listed as recently anticipated by the chair, not all items listed in fact. We discussed items not listed may be brought up for discussion to be set permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB and School Committee Recorder and will be broadcast. Once transcribed, improvements will be made public and posted to our website. So we will first go into executive session. And the motion will be Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee will enter executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter Thirty-eight, Section Twenty-one eighty-three to discuss strategy with respect to negotiations. Holding these discussions in open session may have a detrimental effect on negotiations, and the chair does declare that. Following executive session, the school committee will recommit the regular meeting at six P M. So do I have that motion?
So moved.
Second. Sorry, so moved by Bill Field, second, I have a vote, roll call vote during the executive session, so just go down the line, Bill.
Yes.
Bill, and Diane.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Okay, I call the meeting back to order from executive session. Rob, you wanna do these, there's roses and thorns to teach school, you want me to do?
Actually, we happen to have someone here to report on the roses and thorns.
Oh, no, I don't mean do it in the rose, but.
The M C of the group. Yes, I should call on each group, why not? Because I know there's Fred Erickson, if I don't call everyone on him quickly, there could be consequences. Elliot, are you going up in this place?
No, he's off, oh, Miles, yeah.
We just do in schools.
Hello, everyone.
All right.
Hello.
Thank you, I'm glad to be back. I know we had a little bit of a chaotic start to this whole process from the teachers coming in, but we're dedicated to continuing. And I'm looking forward to meeting with Jake, our new principal, to continue this process. So I'll start with grade eight, they actually didn't input anything, but they were on an A three field trip, which they greatly enjoyed, they had a nice time, kids did well. So that we don't have anything specific from them, because they were quite busy. Team six had some really nice roses, they were really proud of the community outreach that they've been doing this year. And they gave some examples, they had S. October donations to the Elizabeth Freeman Center and construct bridge, and also the H two Oak Foundation, I'm not sure if that's how you pronounce it. But anyway, it's building wells in Ethiopia, so they've been collecting money for that. And they've also done a little bit with Cadda writers partnership and art project collaboration, so they're really proud of their community outreach. What's interesting about their thorns, which is nice about our school, is they're thinking about their fellow teachers. And they're wondering how we might get more permanent resources allocated for clinicians as opposed to interns or grants because of the needs that can see among students. And also, we're wondering how we might add, or they're wondering how we might add some more exploratory options to help alleviate some of the pressure on the exploratory teachers, they get some relatively large classes. And having more options would ease everyone's stress. And some of their suggestions were maybe something in drama or technology. Grade seven, we went to Boston, we rode the T with a hundred kids. It was really fun, I don't recommend it for the late person. We got quite a few stares from Bostonians, but the kids did fine, and I hope it opened up their eyes to some sustainable transportation and and what it might be like to be in the city. As grade seventeen, we're also excited about the number of ideas that we have for next year already. It was our first year together, all of us as one team. And we're just really excited, we're already planning to meet over the summer, just ideas that we wanna make our systems that we developed even that much better. So that's pretty exciting to share. Some thorns that are now done. We felt some pressure near the end of the year to wrap up things nicely for kids, and not feeling as a role one, but there wasn't time to do it well. But we did it well, as well as we could, and we had some great times taking the kids up the mountain and adding little activities. We had a little playo challenge, just fun things to keep the kids engaged. As it turned out, it's not to be that hot. Those things, those men. The explorers for our team is sharing, they made it through another year, that's their rose, they're excited to celebrate the twenty twenty-four graduates. I think it would be just important to note that as the exploratory team, they have seen those kids for all four years. So they're one of the groups of teachers that's really excited when they watch those kids after four years get a chance to graduate. It's very exciting. And they also wish Miles all the best in his new endeavors. Their thorns, strangely enough, are around scheduling again, they also suggested maybe we could find some more offerings for classes. And two of their suggestions were around greenhouse or digital citizenship. So thank you again for having me here, I really appreciate this opportunity, and I look forward to it blossoming next year. In that regard, I hope that we can think about one, if it elaborates the way we hope to, to all the schools, maybe some suggestions about how we can make the process smoother for everyone's, for yours, for ours, but I think it's an important conduit that we'll create, so thank you for the support.
Thanks, Fred. A lot of the things that Fred shared, I just wanted to share. The highlights for Miles and I were, just the last two weeks were jam-packed with really fun things, you know, after finishing up M pass and just kind of the hard work that the students and the staff were engaged in, it was great to see our seventh graders go to Boston, enjoy a great day. I was also on that trip, and the packed T car was full of seventh graders, was fun to see. I was really impressed by the seventh grade team's organization and just ability to be flexible throughout the day, so it was really great. The Philly trip was a big success, they went to see the National Constitution Center, hear from a really interesting Holocaust survivor that students walked away with some, you know, some perspective that they didn't have going in, and so we're exploring the city. Our sixth grade team kept up with their tradition by going to French Park in the last week of school, and they had a great fun day. And our fifth graders headed to Bear Town for a fun day of exploring, and we added a new tradition of a field day, day of field day games as well on that same day. A big shout out to Colin Huggins, a fifth grade parent who really was a leader of this initiative, and we've learned that we have a lot of parents who are ready and eager to bring some more life to our school community as just involved parents, so that was great. On June thirteenth, we sent out our eighth graders with lots of awards and good cheer at our graduation ceremony. The gym was filled with great energy, striving their accomplishments, but also just like, you know, to camaraderie with one another. We sent out Miles' week and thanked him for his great service as well. Now that it's off-season, I'm a coach, so it's off-season in my mind. We've already gotten busy this week with just finalizing the schedule for the upcoming school year and identifying some goals to drive our work into the new school year, as well as working to onboard our new principal, so. Stay tuned.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. So I guess Christie, are you the rose? And Peter's the thorn?
Hi, everyone. This is my last roses and thorns with you, so I just thank you all for that. I, you know, we ended our year really well, it was a quick end of year. First week of June, we completed our science M test, all of the freshmen and students who needed to, you know, wrap things up. Then at the end of that week, on that Friday, June seventh, we had a field day in the afternoon. Students had signed up for activities, and the teachers were amazing, as always, providing lots of different options for students, and so they were engaged in outdoor activities and indoor activities, and it was a really nice, a nice way to end that week of school, leading into our final week. We were engaged in a lot of interviewing in the final weeks of school, and we were hopeful that we had filled all of our positions until we got a last-minute resignation, because one of our master teachers took a position at another local school, so now that is posted. And that was, it was sad to me, so, but we wish him well. So I don't think I have anything else, but it's been a busy end of year. Trying to tie everything up, we've had Ian Brown, our new assistant principal, in for a couple of days a week. And we're looking forward to transitioning over to our new principal.
So Christie, our school committee expressed how we called the graduation, and again, people missed it, we just thank you for all you've done for this district, so we really appreciate it.
We're not seeing anyone from the elementary school, do we move on?
Yes.
Can I ask, just a quick question, for high school and middle school, we've had to varying degrees of consistency about student representation, how does that just?
Traditionally, these meetings, we don't have students in the summer class.
No, I know, but I would assume it's gonna be a new, a new group of students going forward.
We may be in the service here, so. And we will have that here. They're welcome, it's the summer time, because it's gonna be a major crack.
I wasn't too worried about this, I just wanted to make sure that there's some consistency.
Well, as you said, there are those student member items, so grant pools, there's one grant. And just for those people who are watching the program or on CTSB, did I get that right? Okay, but. Yes, oh, there we go. For those who are watching, all of the materials that are going to be discussed are available in this school committee packet, this particular one, under the folder, which is the June twentieth folder, so if you follow along, if you'd like to look at these, you can do so online. So the skills capital grant was awarded to the district, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and ten dollars to support Chapter Seventy-four automotive, it's a competitive state grant. Some of the discussions about this that were quoted in the press release are that it will be used to buy a scissor rack, tabletop tire changer, and a high-capacity wheel balancer. I can't tell you what any of those are, but they sound good. And Ian Brown and, as Christie just said, the new assistant principal for CVTE, and Kristin O'Lo, waxed politically about the grant and the fact that they're going to have this to help the program. That's the only grant, I think.
So we need to have a motion to accept this grant?
So moved.
Go with a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose your abstention, this is unanimous, thank you.
So the next section is hiring updates, and this is for those of you who are following along with the program, listed on the bottom of the personnel report on the back, on the backside. So positions that have yet to be filled are grade three teacher, at Bloody Grove, which you don't want to go into school, grade three teacher, administrative assistant to the principal, directed study supervisor, librarian, and a paraprofessional. At the middle school, I'm actually, and I still get used to saying the W E D DuBois, or that's cool, and I understand now it's referred to as G B R M S.
Just say DuBois, DuBois.
Just DuBois, I like that. An E L A teacher and a paraprofessional and a custodian are yet to be hired. And mine remain just a paraprofessional until what Christie just said, that will be on your next personnel report. And at the district, the D E I V school culture, school culture position, so those are the open positions that we have so far. Moving on, I'm actually bringing for a, an exploratory schedule, a memorandum of understanding for an exploratory schedule for the middle school. And I'll address some of the things that Fred was talking about, but there are such, there have been over the years some structural difficulties. The exploratory program and the performance music program occupy the same pieces of the schedule, and this has always led to scheduling conflicts as they try to make the exploratory program available to all students and performance music available to those who elect to participate. So the groupings can get trapped, that's a problem in towns, which is not good for students or consistent with school committee intentions. And not all students can take exploratory options. This year, the exploratory team worked with the guidance department to develop an innovative solution that corrects most of the issues. So the way this is, and you can actually see these are elements that are in the M O U. The, the exploratory team will teach in thirty-day sessions. The exploratory teachers will each, will teach six classes a day. Both of those changes will enable all students to take exploratory, all exploratory classes, and the groupings of the exploratory classes will decouple the groupings from performance music groupings. It will also allow slower class sizes, which is good for materials, heavy purses like art and design, things like that, courses. It will, it requires the M O U because it's technically above what teachers work. But I want to reiterate the point, this was developed by the teachers, so this is something that they have decided is a good approach to dealing with this. It is, as you can tell by the very last, it's number seven on the M O U, this is a non-precedent setting arrangement and into one-year trial. But the idea is, is I, you know, having actually taught in a school under that circumstance, the way this was, I think this is a really creative way of doing this, and I'm most impressed by the fact that this is a collaboration between the teachers and the administration to make it happen. So if you, do we have to have this approved?
Okay, let's take a motion to approve. So moved. And do I have a second?
Second.
It's the bill, Will show, discussion, questions?
I guess just to what you alluded to right at the start, and maybe Elliot can answer, but does this address some of the things?
Yeah, that's what I brought up, in terms of their concerns. Right. It does, I think that given this new setup, it does require them to teach more sections. But a really good appealing aspect of it is those sections are smaller constraints, and that is really tough this year to have twenty-four hard kids in a classroom, and in our classroom, packing them in, they have their stools for some, and so I think it addresses some of the concerns, it creates other challenges, but they're willing to give it a try, and we'll see how it goes. I think that the important piece is we'll get a trial period for this year and see how it goes with those more frequent terms. Instead of, they had been more before operating subsistence, I guess.
Are you, just, are you getting with a crew, or are you just gonna double the size of the crew classes, or whatever?
Like for the exploratory classes themselves, is that?
No, for crews, because all these teachers, all these
Right.
professional teachers are not having crews right now, right, so is the crew system going away, or is that saying?
That's a regression, the crew system will stay, the trade-off is they won't be doing exploratory crew and they're teaching that sixth class. So for them, their meeting time is actually going to be during crew, so I'll link with them during crew time. I'm not sure if that answered your question, but they wouldn't be leaving any sort of crew lessons this year, this coming year, like they did this past year. And that would be absorbed by the teaching teams, they'll have them five picks a week during crew, instead of just the four.
Okay. Did that answer my question, thank you.
Anyone else? We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose, the pressure unanimous?
Okay, then our next is to request, a request to approve a new job description. So this job description is the licensed practical nurse, this position will be housed, there are two open positions at the high school. This was approved by the school committee during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And with the approval of this job description, then the hiring process can begin, we can get people on board to leave a little, give us assistance.
Do I have a motion? So, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. And I'm not sure if you know this, Rob, we're here, has U N C approved this, or at least given their blessing? Typically, that's what's supposed to happen. Just make sure those three U N C, it's there. It's there, you have. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Okay, then the next.
So the next, let me take for a second, because it's a cell phone discussion, but I wasn't at the last meeting. So I have concerns that this is still going to be like a policy, and Peter and I have had this discussion, and Rich and I, and policy subcommittee has not seen this. So it was gonna go from a policy to a one-year pilot. And that's fine, I don't have a problem, but right now, I don't think we should approve a policy that's not gone through our procedures. I think that's, there's something wrong with that, it's, there's a reason that we have a policy subcommittee, we have a reason we do it that way, so. I'm not saying we should, I'm not planning to vote tonight on this unless the rest of the school committee wants to, but there's also some other parts of this that still need to be fine-tuned. It's more about the process than it is about what's inside here, I'm not against what's in there, or you had some concerns too?
I share, yeah, I share your concerns, and I second what I said at the last meeting, which is I also think with now, especially with you principals and assistant principals all identified and soon to be in place, I would, I would like to pull them into the discussion as well.
I'd love to see input from all three principals and assistant principals, again, I'm not against this, but I don't wanna throw something at someone, Christie.
Our timelines for getting our handbooks out are, we have to have our handbooks ready by the middle of July, and we had brought this discussion up last summer.
Yep.
And I just have real concerns that we might go into another school year operationally on the ground without a support of our route of procedures for in the building for us to address this issue.
So I agree with you, it's down to the school committee's fault. We've been waiting, no, no, you're not, we've been waiting for this to come to us for, since last July, so I guess that's twelve months. And, and I'm, and I'm agreeing with everything you say, but I'm refusing to approve, we can vote on it, and I may be the one to vote no on it, a policy that may or may not be flawed, and the process definitely is flawed, just so we make the handbook, and then in September say, oh, I wish we hadn't done that. Because maybe one of the principals says, oh, I have a great idea, or, or why, whatever, it's up to the rest of the school committee, I absolutely agree with you. What's the deadline, when is the handbook? July fifteenth? And we don't meet again to? Twenty-fifth?
July nine.
July nine.
Is the handbook?
It's when the assistant principal.
We meet the twenty-fifth of July.
Yeah.
I don't see why we can't meet before then, to solve this problem, seems to me, let's just have another meeting.
And can the policy committee, subcommittee, meet? We are meeting, you're meeting next week. Okay, so that takes care of that part. Well, it doesn't, it's not on the agenda, and we have a full agenda, but we should look at it, or it's up to the school committee, if we wanna make policy out of this and make this a one-year pilot, I'm okay with that too, but right now, it's, well, it says it's a policy, but it's not a policy.
And it reads like a policy.
Well, you were, yeah, you were, at the last meeting, there was, like, it was said, it said policy, but it really wasn't a policy, I forget who said that, but there was like a really great policy.
It does though.
Yeah, it does, policy recommendations.
And that's like all of the policies have some letter code assigned to them, and then it being the first read, second reading of people, of the back, so it does.
I mean, I wanna see something definitely done before, obviously before the school year starts, I mean, whatever it is, I want it done right. As far as the handbook goes, for something like this, I don't know what the, I mean, if we have to add it late, it's gonna be, everyone's gonna know, and I mean, I don't wanna be held hostage to the handbook, or it can be an addendum and be like, hey, this is
An insert.
Yeah, this is what we're doing, and, you know, this is the way it's gonna be, and, you know, we didn't get any time for the handbook, but I agree with Steve, that I want it done right. Done, you know, that input. But I also wanna make sure it's done, so it's not like our last meeting in August either. I think there's a patent medium somewhere where it can be done right, but it doesn't have to be rushed, but that definitely needs to be done, out of the time before the school year starts to get the word out, have it implemented, and have everyone on board.
Why couldn't we run it as we've done this other program, which in my teaching career, we used to call it a pilot program? Why don't we run this as a pilot? Not as a policy, it's a pilot program to determine exactly all of the misgivings and the problems that might be inherent in this. And send it out that way, it's a, it's a pilot program for one year to be reevaluated both during the year and at the end of the academic year.
If I might hop in, it's basically, we're just, we're not alone in this trouble. Social media, cell phones, basically all, all the other districts have been trying to do this, and I did a review of the policies that my colleagues were able to send me. And they range from just what Bill will say, to something that's in the handbook, basically something that, basically describes, Lee, both Lee and Lennox have something that goes in the handbook about how they're gonna do it. Others, that's one end of perspective, the other end of perspective are Mount Great Lock, Knapp's, McCann, and Pittsfield, and Hoozick. All of them have policies, and Hoozick Valley, McCann, and Knapp's use these yonder cultures, and they've implemented them this year without any problem, according to what I've been told by those superintendents. So we've got models that could be considered at, at a meeting, the upcoming policy, and I can put them together into some sort of package, people to consider.
So the question, Rob, is if we, whether we do this as a pilot or a policy, I don't care about the process, it's the rules. Let the schools, the administration figure out the process, you know, we're setting the rules, I don't care what you do with it, maybe this does what to do with it, I'm not sure most policies have a process in it, you know, you do this, you do that, you do that, so it's, cell phones are banned, you figure out how they're banned, that's not our job.
Yeah.
That's, that's how I look at it, I'm not here to micromanage it, it's schools.
No. Yeah, I don't think the punishments have to be in there, I mean, maybe they, they wanted to be in there, but, I mean, I think, and I think Peter did a good job saying how, you know, I mean, again, we're in restorative justice, you know, process, and he gave a bit of explanation as to, well, wouldn't necessarily have the policies, that would be up to the discretion to the, of the principal, but they, you know, they could start off with restorative justice, or, there's a lot of leeway there, I mean, I guess having it in could give them a buffer as far as this is the potential, but I agree with you, or, I mean, I think we set the policy, no cell phones, whatever happens to be bell-to-bell, and then as far as the implementation and the precautions for having, let the individual schools or the superintendent figure that out.
I pulled language from the Newtown Middle School, and it was a very brief, like, three sentences that basically came from their handbook and then pointed to policy, which might be a way to kind of be a hybrid of getting our point across and doing that in the interest of time, putting a placeholder there, but then being able to push some of the nuances and the specifics about how it gets enforced out to each individual school and each individual principal. I can just read it, and again, this could be fine-tuned to kind of what ours, do you have, actually, this is sent to you in an email.
I'll get it, I've got the same thing for Lee and Lennox as well, I've got copies of their, uh, the moon.
But it was essentially kind of saying that all of the electronic devices must be kept away and are brought to school if the students own risk, exceptions are made for students that have a medical diagnosis requiring them. Students can use phones in the office if they need to contact home, students unable to follow this policy face disciplinary consequences. And then from there, it goes out to, to the schools to do what they wanna do.
And that's very similar to what Lennox is, where they say, basically say, use of cell phones are not permitted in the middle school, goes on with that, high schools may not use during class time. When entered classroom students will be asked to place their cell phones, Lee's a little more specific, to ensure a safe, productive, meaningful learning environment, cell phones and related electronics are not to be seen or heard during school day, and then that's, essentially, those are in their handbooks. The whole issue, I think, is quite pressing. Peter made available this article right here, which is Surgeon General, why I'm calling for a warning label on social media platforms. And then just today, if you've been following the newspapers, Los Angeles District banned.
Seven hundred and twenty thousand students.
Yeah, and it's, it's interesting, this fellow here, Vivek Murphy, who's the surgeon general, he said, basically, finishes it with a uh, you know, essentially, this is, uh, we, we, everybody's gotta act, because the, the crisis of adolescent mental health is, is, is quite serious all across the country.
It's, yeah, I, I guess we're jumping again if, if the Policy Committee is, or maybe we're not gonna have a policy, we're gonna have guidelines, or whatever we talked about. I still struggle with phones and money. I don't think they should be there, period. I don't think a fourth grader should have a cellphone. Not put away in a cubby or stuffed in a backpack, but just, they're not allowed. Middle school, high school, different story, bell to bell, I get it. But I just think we're, you know, I think that that, with the Surgeon General, would agree that young, really young children should not have access to cell phones. And.
I'll, I'll be good at that. I, I think there's another important point that Corey made, and that's about medical use.
Oh, there are always gonna be exceptions.
Yeah, but I wanna make sure we have that in there, so that, you know, that documented medical use is allowed.
But I just don't get the bell to bell thing for the primary school, the elementary school. To me, it's, uh, they should just be banned.
Not only that, someone's here representing that, Marty Ruck, you know, because I'd be curious how many kids right now have cell phones, is that, I'll bet you there are a few.
And, uh, to me, to lump them in, in more or less with the same restrictions, admittedly, there's reference to bags and cubbies for the elementary school, to the middle school and high school, just nothing. Just nothing.
I think we have solid ground to be, to, so, essentially, there should be, I think, what I get from what you're saying is that a differentiation based on grades.
Yes.
And a complete ban on cell phones for elementary students, I think also deals with some equity issues. Because not all, like, there's probably gonna be a fairly small percentage of students who've got, I think, elementary grade levels.
And there will be complaints. There're gonna be complaints at all levels, I know. And, and exceptions need to be identified, uh, in reasonable circumstances, but I just think it's, so.
Could we?
We're not doing children any favors, young children any favors by, uh, in effect, allowing them and even encouraging them to bring phones into your school and then put.
I wonder, we can make a motion to direct the superintendent to write some simple language to go into each of the handbooks, stating that, um, school phones are banned from seen and heard, bell to bell, at all of the schools. And then, then, and then we're gonna leave the next step to the, to the schools and the administration to come up with rules of use or non-use or.
So those are two things, all right. We can do that, there's, I'm not against that at all. But elementary school, Will's point, and medical uses.
Right.
I think we should address those in, in our motion.
Okay.
So the direction we give is clear that what we're gonna do in elementary school, if we agree with Bill.
Yeah.
And then medical uses, I think, it's up to the administration to come up with some sort of a policy and procedure, because we don't want 300 kids bringing their phone and all saying, it's a medical reason. We, we want some documentation. Uh, and there, there is some, there's, well, certainly is some, there are many who use it for diabetes. And that's important. We, we want them to be able to do that, if that's what they're using it for, not skirting their rules. So somewhere, and let's talk about the elementary school for a minute before we have a motion. Yeah, go ahead, Kristy.
I just wanted to remind everyone, Katie was here at the last meeting, and when the question was asked about the elementary school, she said, at the elementary school, it is a non-issue. That, those were her words, um, for now, and I'm not right. Again, I'm not suggesting, I just wanted to remind everyone that, you know, she wasn't here at the last time.
I won't say.
When she was asked, that was what she said.
So, so I'm gonna agree with Bill. By us putting anything in here that we allow it at certain times in the elementary school is almost a burden.
Right.
Because if they don't have them now, and the school doesn't allow them, eh, it's, continues to be a non-issue.
Right.
And if there's a reason, you know, the administration could put something in there that if there's a reason on an individual basis that someone needs to have on the elementary school medical mostly, I could pick up.
And it could be different, it could be headphones.
Yeah.
For kids with some security issues, like iPad for kids that are on final fours or IP.
Yeah. So hearing that, someone wanna try to make a motion that this will solve the handbook case also?
Try it. So I vote, I make a motion that we direct the superintendent to write, uh, can't call it a policy, but.
Guidelines.
Guidelines for the handbook stating that there will be no use of electronic devices from bell to bell in any school in any part of the school district, um, unless there is a medical or education. I shouldn't say some, electronic devices, because it's guided through your law system.
That watches.
Watches, right.
But that's not, that doesn't address my issue.
Right.
I think you have to stick to the, the elementary school.
Well, I think if Ann agrees, that motion is for the middle school and elementary school.
Okay.
Middle school and high school. And then that, if Ann agrees that they, and that a complete ban at the.
Complete banning down.
Okay.
Oh, well.
Without.
With, and.
Well, that's, we, we.
There's a medical or educational reason.
Yeah.
Can I ask, Peter?
Can we just get a second on that? So, okay, go ahead.
Peter? It seems to me what we're talking about is, is making a general policy and then asking you to create a specific one. Is that not correct? And where does that place me?
In, in piece-perfect worlds, I, I would have wanted the agenda item to be cellphone discussion, not policy discussion of potential vote. You've, you've got two, four, six very qualified administrators at each building who are gonna create rules for each level that are appropriate for each level. I mean, there's a ton of data out there for us to create these rules with. I, I don't think it's something that the school committee needs to create a policy for.
Right, so if they just get a, so to get that down, it's not a policy.
Well, so, so, we're not, it's a guidelines, and we're not, so I'm asking you, I think it's a good question Bill's asking. So what we're saying to you is, you've heard the motion. We're saying, we're not gonna impose rules, and I think we need to do it as a district. I don't think it should be each school doing it. I think everyone should sit down in a room with the administration and say, okay, how are we gonna do this? But we're not gonna tell you A, B, C, D, this is how you do this.
Right, right.
Figure out a way, Bill.
I feel like what we just proposed actually gets us closer to that and gives you more flexibility and time to do that with the new teams than this document has the same.
Agreed.
I like that.
If, if I might also add, uh, we've got some wonderful, uh, actually institutional knowledge coming to us. Uh, so, for example, uh, the, uh, Mount Raylock policy on this, has already got some wonderful language. Student, uh, basically, it's student-owned technology devices are defined as any device capable of communicating, being text or voice or other device that's not provided. So there's a definition to get to that yearbook stuff and the other things that will be mentioned. Uh, but Jake wrote, basically Jake was a part of writing this, and he's, I'm like, starting July 1, he said, I don't know exactly what Christopher Barnes has, but I, I, basically, in most districts have, everybody's had it. So I feel as though, it's a second what Peter is saying, we got people, uh, people who are currently here and new people coming in who've got, uh, they're the ones who've been dealing with it for years, and I think that they're the ones who can come up with a, uh, you know, an effective, uh, procedure, what do we call a procedure, in memory of Martha Mio, because these are very specific.
Yeah, sure, this is not a wall thing.
Yeah. But it's, uh, I think that, uh, you know, we could certainly come up with something, uh, working in, as, as a group, or actually work in each building, though.
Yeah.
It's gonna work best in this building, it's gonna work the best in.
As long as they're not, as long as they're in conjunction. The, the other thing is, what doesn't work, let's say, in October, something didn't work, you don't have to come back to us.
Right.
And we don't have to say, okay, and discuss it, you just fix it.
Right.
And, and that's the way it should be. You, we, we shouldn't get involved in what's going on day to day in the schools.
I agree.
And, and I think that it's important that it's the school committee that says we're doing this.
Yeah.
And then everybody working in schools, if it's that, how to do it, but then the I R parent, you don't blame us, yes, we'll do that.
I, I like.
We came up to the I R parent thing, I mean, what was still in here, and Collins', um, question stating about equity issues with the confiscation, parenting, to me, the schools by four hands to pick up. I, I would ask people at least keep that in mind as a thing about what to do, because I felt that that was a very important issue that he raised.
It, it was, this is more reflective of what I talked about last year when we started this in July. I'm one of the people who are most affected by it, to have input into it. And I, I understand that the principals did it, I'm not sure what the input was as much as it would be this way.
Where are you referring, the students?
No, from the teachers and the, and the principals.
If I may add, when, when Kristy and I met with the staff specifically about this issue, we were able to find consensus when we agreed as a staff that the cell phones would go away in exchange for another way to access the internet. Unfortunately, a lot of our teachers, because we don't have a one-to-one system set up of, of Chromebooks and laptops, and not every kid can afford their own MacBook, kids are using their phone to type in journalism class.
So, so let me ask, sure. We talked about this, is there a ways to get more Chromebooks?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's by September?
We're working on that.
Okay. That behind the scenes is being worked on, because there is money available, we need to do that. Because that's the other reason, to come up with a policy that says to students, you can't get on the internet unless you break the rules.
Yes.
Right. Isn't stupid.
That was one I think too, that when you look at the play life policy, because it almost sounded like you could not use your own personal computer, and I don't know that we wanna go that far, because there is a population of students that have their own, and we want to encourage them to do that to make sure that the Chromebooks are gonna be in the feed, so.
So we're, we're looking at not a policy anymore, but a guideline to be given to the administrations of each of the three buildings to do what they feel is best within that building.
Evan Robb is here, and some of the administrators here, they've heard us loud and clear, and I understand what our intention is.
So when could we expect to hear back from the administrators from each building? Because we're looking at, we're only looking at one meeting in July, and one meeting.
Why do we have to hear back?
Well, the motion was bell to bell.
Yeah.
It wasn't design your own system, there was, there's no bell to bell. The only design they're doing is punishment or.
Or how they're, what they're doing with the phones.
Right, what, I mean.
Their empowerment, they're gonna.
The school committee's official.
Is bell to bell.
Position is bell to bell.
And it'd be great to hear back from them, just to let us know what you're doing, but it's not like this big pressure to get back to us by our next meeting, it's, ah, you're on your own now.
May I try, may I try this?
Yeah, it'll be, yeah.
I got a concept. We direct the superintendent to work with middle school and high school building administrators to write guidelines for student-owned technology devices not approved by the administration, which, that's your point of view, something. Uh, she, those student-owned technology devices from bell to bell, unless there are medical issues that require such use.
And I'm okay with it, because you said middle and middle.
They are.
Yeah. I, I, I want the elementary school to come back to us if they feel that bell to bell is appropriate for the elementary school. I think this should be banned or outright.
And, and actually, I think I've heard, medical or educational reasons.
Yeah.
Not just medical, yeah, with acceptance for those.
Uh, you know, that's, with exceptions, I, I like that, with exceptions.
Yeah. Medical or educational.
Can I just ask, Ellie, and I don't wanna put you on the spot, but basically, the middle school, I mean, you were put on the ground, you did this all on your own last year, from what I understand, successful, like, having middle school students who would order, accept by it. Um, but, like, do you feel it was successful, and like, what, I mean, do you need us to set more guidelines as far as the punishment? Or do you think that's something that you and the administration can handle yourself? Like, how did it go as you were a test case for us?
Right.
Unofficial rule.
Yeah, I think, um, I think it went well in some aspects. I feel like in the fifth and sixth grades, it was managed very well. You know, the, it was, the message was sent loud and clear, um, to those students, and consistency was really, really important. And some of the eighth grade, I think, um, consistency was not always there, um, you know, on the teacher front. Um, so that's where, for me, as an administrator, following up, it was like, any disciplinary thing or feedback to the student or checking in with the family, um, when it was brought to my attention in those older grades, it was like, oh, so the student, they cut it out 10 times, and I, I wish I knew sooner than 10 times. Um, so I think, I have a lot of ideas on how to just structure and coach us as a full faculty to monitor it and, um, just like, close that gap on follow through. Um, I think overall, it was a success. They weren't on their phones during class time, just like, glued to their phones, right? That's what you envisioned, and we say, sure, have a cellphone. Um, so that mission was accomplished, for sure. I think, um, did they have it in their pockets and not their lockers? Absolutely. I think the seventh, eighth grade especially, they were looking in their pockets. But they weren't out for 90% of the class, you know, and, and on them texting people. Um, so I think it was, it was partially a win.
They'd get forced in hallway and lunch too.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's progress.
Yeah, yeah, and I think, and that's over various areas, right, of like, um, our weaknesses, right? You know, in terms of monitoring hallways and cafeteria, recess, bathrooms, right? If it's in their pocket, they can go take a bathroom break and tell somebody.
Yeah.
Um, so.
I'm getting, I understand that they're supposed to keep them, like, in their lockers.
Yes. Yeah, that's what my issue is, right? Yes.
Because you got hot, checking it, and then, you know, next to the locker.
Yeah. Right, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'm not looking back, but I'm like, it's supposed to stay in the locker.
Go ahead, Rob.
I just, I just think it's very interesting that, uh, the, let's see, Surgeon General, uh, and Los Angeles, they, they're into total madness. Uh, and, and partly, it has to do with the addicting, or addictive, I don't know, nature of, uh, first of all, cell phones, which by, by themselves, they actually, every time you get a buzz, or like, answer your phone, you get serotonin pumped into your, uh, brain, and it, like, oh, that's encouraging to do this. Not to mention the fact that the business model of social media platforms is specifically addictive. And so I think that one of the things that, uh, you know, this idea that they can, in their hallway or someplace else, uh, we are helping, we're helping to support their addiction, and I'm sorry, I'm a too much of a this point, yeah. But it's like, it, it's, there is, this, this is physically addicted, or psychologically addicted, but I don't care how.
And it's also addictive for parents. And parents have to kind of realize that they're modeling for their children at home. And, uh, you know, the dinner table is not a place for you to eat your, uh, you know, your french fry while you're looking at your, at your phone.
The other side of that, Bill, is, the effect this is gonna have, it's not just on the students, the parents, who I understand that's a, a large majority, who text their kids all day in school.
Yeah, right, yeah.
An interesting observation also is, that if we were to look at, if we were to observe and monitor students who have their cell phones taken away, what do they look like? I think I would argue probably they're going to be demonstrating some of the withdrawal symptoms that you see of people affecting something else. So I think that the, is, the issue that we have is, like, if we do this, I think that, uh, that comes, that comes up from an administrator's point of view. I love my school committee, they tell me what to do, and they take the blame. You know, it's, basically, what happens is when it's, and I make this whole big argument, when it's a policy, uh, we administrators, essentially, we are making manifest that which the school committee has told us to do, uh, which gives us a degree, or gives administrators a degree of, of latitude in terms of this, because you're the elected officials of the people.
Right, that's, that's why we should do this.
So I, I, I think that this is, uh, something that can be done, is, is if we get something in place in time, but something that is sort of foreshadowing what might have actually become a, a, a policy. So, and we could actually use this as somewhat experimental over the coming months, uh, that could help to, uh, help to, to shape the policy that eventually is, uh, adopted by the school committee. In the meantime, we take the heat.
So, I think, yeah, it's right. We're the ones who initiated it still.
So are we.
It's not a policy. Good.
And I think the other thing, you direct them to the minute of this meeting.
Yeah.
The other thing is, for the elementary school, let's say that cell phones, electronic devices are not to be brought to school. That's, that's the end of it. There will be parents who say that, that they're.
That's that's the end of it, there will be parents who say that that they are because they get off the bus to go to their nanny's house and they have to get the phone. That's the individual thing that the individual administrator in that school has to deal with.
Also being brought to school, there are less.
Well, it's the other, but the the thing is that they are not to be brought to school, that that takes care of that bit of it and. And then the administrator still has to deal with it.
Sure. So we have a motion in a second, we want more discussion or we want.
Can I ask, Peter, do you envision this as a ban?
What's a ban?
That's what I'm asking, is this a ban? No cell phones, is that what I'm hearing or it's, I have trouble with extremes. I've always had trouble with being in the extreme, a ban, total ban to me is an extreme.
It's not a total ban, it's a ban with exceptions, as we've been discussing, for medical, for educational, for other particular circumstances that can be discussed with the administration.
And it's not a ban that's right up to school, it's it's bell to bell.
It's a ban in school.
Yes, it's a ban in school.
Yeah, bell to bell, so kids are playing soccer at the high school, once the school bell rings and they want to remind their parents that practice goes to seven. Instead of six, uh, after school's over, they pull it out of their locker and they.
And the coaches are gonna have to fall.
An interesting thing is that that uh, we have a cell phone ban, we're eligible for cell phone program. And a a way that might be able to address the elementary. Uh, these are, I think you've already pitched on your bags or something.
Yes, we have.
Uh, a way that might be able to address the elementary business that, yeah, bring your, bring your phone to school, but it's going in a bag as soon as you walk in.
No, I.
No, we don't want it.
None of that, that's what, that's what, that's divorced in the high school. This, we're talking the elementary school, they should not have phones in schools.
Educational, medical.
With exceptions.
Yeah.
Medical, educational, and any other reasonable exception the administration agrees to with parents.
Yeah, I have my own opinion about those pouches. I like honesty, I like kids to be trusted and I don't want to, I want them to prove that we have to lock them up before we start locking things up.
Yeah.
If if we have an agreement with the kids that this is the rules, you need to like, like any other rule in the school, and there are consequences. But if we immediately just start to lock things up, that's, I don't know, with high school kids especially, I think that's a huge mistake.
Well, that's one of the guidelines we can, you've heard, is that we don't like, well, now we're getting into.
No, no, I'm not saying the guidelines, that's my opinion.
Okay.
And and if if the high school decides to lock them all up, they can, I can, I don't have to like it. And they don't have to answer to me.
Okay.
So we have a motion in a second.
And and just to chose, yeah, I mean, I I read something, if you want.
Do you want to use that as your?
I love discussing this. So what I said is we direct superintendent to work with middle and high school to write guidelines for student-owned technology devices not approved by the administration. Stating there will be no student-owned technology devices from bell to bell with exceptions for medical issues, educational reasons, or other, what was the?
Unforeseen circumstances.
Uh, we furthermore direct uh, superintendent, well, basically to ban uh, ban these devices in the elementary school.
Yeah, with with appropriate exception, with appropriate.
Okay.
And do you take that as your role?
Yeah, I would say that, yeah, it's fine, I mean, you could use the word ban or you could take the ban out of there and say, there will not be.
Got it.
First of all, it's in the elementary school.
I don't, I don't mind the word ban in the elementary, I think it's great. There's no, there's no quote in the elementary school. That's that's what a ban is, I I go along with Steve. I'm very leery of things that are set down in concrete and extremes at the high school.
Of course, they're gonna do this kickback and shit.
Okay, so the, so the following sentence, yeah, the school committee is in agreement that there should be no cell phones in the elementary school.
Chris has got another question.
With exception.
I don't know if we're, they're actually like on the language you just read, so if they are, I would like to um, suggest that you put the word documented in front of medical.
Yes, yeah, yes.
Because if they have it, then there's a medical plan attached to it.
No, absolutely, yeah, yes.
So.
Yes. Absolutely.
This is someone who's had every excuse in the book for this.
My right eye twitched, so.
So we have a motion in a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in vain. It's unanimous. Okay, we have no, we have an update on the I.
Please just flip.
Very good, so uh, my next is, I have my notes here. Okay, uh, so the next one is D E R, is that where we are now?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, so what this one is, update first of all. Uh, uh, Peter told me, said that we're working on this and will share a graphic next meeting. It will be timed to the portrait of the graphic, that's an update on the varsity inclusion from D E I B poster. Uh, I also just wanted to make everybody aware, I know that everyone's concerned about the uh, the basically uh, inducting the new principals and administrative staff into the thing. And I wanted to let you all know that uh, you know, I scheduled a meeting on uh, June seventeenth, uh, which was attended by almost everybody. Uh, and it was uh, to, it was basically, yeah, to prepare for the twenty twenty four school year uh, meeting. The objectives of the meeting were outgoing and incoming principals would be able to exchange contact information, feel comfortable scheduling meetings to discuss building initiatives and challenges. Also, it was for new principals and our new assistant principal can meet not just their principal or assistant principal, but the entire team who they will be working next year. Putting a face to a name will hopefully facilitate summertime conversations. The entire team can be aware of district plans and be prepared to contribute where necessary. Collins, she, I'll be working on district improvement plan over the next two months and sharing the work and asking for feedback, so we just wanted to keep that on people's agendas. Uh, because the district improvement plan is going to be published, but the school improvement plans will be deferred until later, late in the fall. To give the new princ, new administrative teams the opportunity to work on it. Uh, also, we worked on choosing uh, dates for district meetings and also discussed some of the major building initiatives such as the leveling plan. Uh, the high school, discussion of D E I B uh, at the middle school and work on family engagement, uh, stuff of that sort. And so that, I just want to let you know, they they're, we're going to be gone. Uh, and they were, the people who were really hired were kind of show up even though we're not paying them. Uh, but more and more will be scheduled for after they start on July.
So that's about it for today. Thank you, subcommittee reports, policy is meeting next Tuesday, virtual meeting only at five P M. Uh, the link will is on the website. Buildings and grounds.
Buildings and grounds, um, Jason couldn't make the meeting, so there's uh, there were the three of us and Steve, and Steve will help me out with this, okay? Uh, we discussed the roadwork starting on uh, June seventeenth with the town. Uh, there's been lots of problems with parking as Jason and and all of us have been, what, eight years, we've been still dealing with it? And it seems that it's still going on, but um, we discussed the turnaround located in the farmhouse driveway and the subsequent lining up area to the south of the school. By the side of Monument Valley Road. Um, Steve asked, uh, we we asked some questions about signage and and road markings, which are included in the project, do you want to add anything, Steve, to that?
Uh, just that we're gonna have that parking right in front of the building. There's like seventeen spaces.
Seventeen spaces, right.
Right.
Right along the road. Yeah, so it'd be parallel parking, pulling, there's not enough space for a diagonal.
Um, we talked at length about ways that parents can connect when picking up their children at the end of the day. And this led into a long conversation about creating, for us was exciting and um. Uh, Diane and Sarah went and uh, scouted it out, I guess, right? Um, a natural play area to the south and east of the existing soccer fields. And um, we we extensively talked about it. Uh, Sarah brought pictures of a school, um, the Waldorf School, I believe, of things that are naturally made, that the kids can work with. There is, according to um, Steve, outdoor equipment already affiliated with a high five outdoor play structures that are there. Um, we talked about that this would be a great way for kids to play naturally. Um, with, I would, I would think supervision, um, parental, a good way for parents to get to know each other. Um, it was, um, I was very excited myself and Diane was too, to um, hear that this is possible to do. Um, to take a few natural pieces and we saw like kids climbing through logs. Uh, Steve was um, very uh, encouraging in that the staff, the maintenance staff, which is wonderful, would love to do this. And would would have a lot of fun creating different structures for the kids to not just swing or the kind of what we're used to. But something that, at least in my school day, was part of the environment, we went outside into the woods, we did trails, stuff like that. Um, I'm sure, and and we talked about, you know, this could be done by September, correct? Okay, so.
It actually dovetails nicely into the, just to bring it back to the cell phone stuff, because all of the prescriptions of what can be done, it's getting the phones out of their hands and getting more structured play into their lives. And so I think it's wonderful.
Yeah, and it's very much along this uh, program that's now becoming a national program, the Let's Grow project. Which is trying to change the structure of play from something that has to be supervised, that the kids are kind of like, they have to do this, they have to do that, well, that's not play. Play should be unsupervised, it should be um, manifested like kids do in the old days when they went to the swimming hole. And, you know, I shouldn't say that because parents weren't allowed to go to the swimming hole. It was probably, you know, we're a lifeguard, that would be the role of of a supervisor, a lifeguard, not somebody to judge, you know, that, no, you play with that boy and all that or a girl, so, okay? Um, the middle school will be hosting Cleo this summer, uh, they're gonna do replacing the heat pumps. Uh, with new style heat pumps and communication systems. And the high school is continuing with repairs and maintenance as they continue to do uh, with new equipment and um, new um, furniture. Um, I sent you a thing, any word on the uh, the fascia?
Yeah, I have, I do have that letter that uh, Peter sent to, you know, Hoff was his last name.
Hoff, right.
No, no, it's, I can use bits and pieces of it for some, something that addresses the fascia.
Okay, good.
I did talk to uh, to Nisko about that as well, so she's aware of it and we're gonna try to get this done ASAP and just plan it ahead of time.
Good, okay, yeah.
What is it?
It's the uh, the the perennial look of the schools, you walk in and you see chips, you see the fascia totally.
Why are we putting any money into that?
So.
We're, well.
And that's the question.
The recommendation that I'm going to make is that we don't.
Thank you.
But I want to explain why, because there's this thought out there that we're intentionally ignoring it so that this new building will pass. That's not the case.
And it, it doesn't affect education one bit, it would be nice if it looked nicer, I agree, but it doesn't affect education. Of course, you and I have been here long enough to know why that's not that way, but I guess other people don't.
So I'm gonna create some sort of little slur slash article that will explain how we got to where we are and why we're not doing anything for the time being.
Anything else? Uh, so. Anything else from Diane, I need? I think you've got chair or building down.
Okay, next is superintendent's evaluation is on hold, although superintendent's on medical leave, finance is not met, negotiations is wrapped up. Uh, Rob, do you have anything to say on the personnel report?
Uh, the only thing I have to say on the first personnel report is that this district is incredibly lucky for some of the people they're adding to the uh, uh, to the staff of the district. Uh, on this one, we've got uh, Christopher Barnes, but everybody also knows Jake, the catalyst has joined the team as well. And I think that uh, and we also have Betsy Gade Steen, who's joining us here on that school. And Christopher Barnes, I I don't know if you've read the email or whatever, I'm gonna give you the general sense of the whole thing. But he is a, you know, he's got a regional experience, he's done this a lot. Betsy Gade Steen is coming to us from North Adams, uh, Regional School Leadership, where she had been an elementary teacher. But uh, she'll be moving into the assistant principal at uh, Murrayville. And of course, Jake, the catalyst, this is the interesting. Uh, for those who don't know, Jake was, if not the youngest, the second youngest person ever paid a superintendent in Massachusetts. He was thirty-four years old when he was uh, appointed superintendent of Lee, Massachusetts. And perhaps, did you have him as your principal?
I did not, my president.
Okay, let's just check, uh, but I, he has nineteen years, he's been superintendent before that, he had been in um. Uh, he had been the principal of, lead middle and high. So I think that the people that I'm mentioning here are just fantastic additions to the the program. Would that I were still employed, whether or that I'm not retired, I really enjoy working uh, with that and his team. Uh, and then we have reservations, those are, those are, are you typically?
Yeah.
Yeah, Michelle Beck, who's been just a wonderful addition to the staff, is is going to relieve us on, has left us a lot. And uh, Arbat Zazu, uh, I kind of, probably, anyhow. Ellos Shapiro, uh, was if, uh, designed effective six fourteen. And then you can see the rest of the appointments, which are for our extra curriculum summer appointments, if anyone has any questions about things. Other than that, I'm done.
I'll say it's nice to see the press releases of the new hires. Oh, wow, that's something we haven't been great about doing in the past, it made a big difference, and so it would be nice to continue. The practice of getting ahead of those types of things, not just hires, but initiatives as well, and getting the releases out to the local media outlets.
Agreed. Um, who wants to do the MSBA, Jason?
Um, yeah, so, sure, um, we've uh, have our next meeting Wednesday, so uh, it's six days, um, next Wednesday. And we had a another informational, our first online informational session on a session Monday, this past Monday. Um, thought went really well, um, well attended and it's getting clicks uh, online and people are pulling up. Um, basically, what uh, the similar uh, presentation that we got at the last school committee meeting. Um, so after this, uh, coming next Wednesday's meeting, we'll have a lot more to offer at our July update.
Anything to add on the other?
Exactly, uh, we're, the educational program, Christie, Ian and I have been working on it to bring it up to uh, uh. Donna, Nisko has some recommendations, and so we're working very closely with her. We ran up until this meeting to make sure that whatever, what we're producing will be uh, reviewed favorably on the MSBA.
School committee has approved the educational program, they're making minor changes and revisions to it to bring it in line to guidelines. Um, next is the unit eight contract, which is available in the packet, do I have a motion to approve?
Some move?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any, what are you opposed or赞成? It's unanimous, Sharon, do you want to just give a brief explanation on the applicable F Y twenty five insurance rights?
Yes, so these are uh, for the retirees, we have three retirees on the individual uh, P P O plans. And three on the family P P O plans. Previously, well, at the current time, the district pays seventy-two point five percent for retiree insurance. This proposal will have the P P O plan and the P O S plan for retirees, we don't have anyone on the P P, on the P O S plan. They will be paid and they will have a contribution of a dollar amount equal to the H M O value. So, but it will never go below fifty-one percent, that's the proposal. By law, it can't go below fifty percent. Uh, if we made this change currently, uh, it would save us about thirty thousand dollars a year. I know that it puts an additional burden on the retiree, but that thirty thousand dollars is equal to a paraprofessional plus part of the insurance. Uh, which is why the proposal is on the table.
So do I have a motion?
I make a motion to change the retiree cost share contribution.
Oh, you have that?
I have it, yeah.
All right, all right.
Right.
All right, okay.
I'm trying to, you told me to do it.
I make a motion to change the retiree cost sharing contribution for the P P O and P O S insurance plans from a percentage to a dollar amount. Equivalent to the district's share of the H M O plans. Districts, the district's share should not be less than fifty-one percent of the cost of the P P O and P O S insurance plan. Should the H M O dollar equivalent result in a cost share of less than fifty-one percent, then the district's contribution. then the district's contribution should be factored at fifty-one percent of the annual cost.
Do I have a sec? Oh, a second. Thank you. Something harder than I should have. Any discussion?
Understand what he just said.
Oh, you're, I understand. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And any abstention or, no, it's unanimous. Thank you. Any public comment? While your members consent, we are, sure. Thank you very much, everyone.